We'll move now to a presentation by Matt Chatfield on the New York Forward project.
Thank you very much. Does this sound?
Doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it.
No.
I can project pretty good, though. Any chance we could get that up on the screen? Technology.
Only good at work. Let me get out of there and get back in.
That's okay. I'm gonna get started. But board members each have a pronoun. Matt Chatfield, Executive Director of the Webster-Nachman-Gome Alliance. The Alliance was the entity that wrote the grant application for the New York Forward Grant Program on behalf of the village. It was our second attempt, and this year we were successful. Today, I have a quick agenda of about five topic items. I want to give an overview of what the program really is, talk about the local planning committee, which is the body that will guide the process. We'll talk about the open call for projects, which is the solicitation for active projects to be awarded funds in the future. The strategic investment plan, which is the overall document that gets assembled and sent to the state. And then, of course, talking about public engagement and stakeholders.
Do you want to share?
A little award.
Sure.
No, because that's sure.
That's amazing.
Yeah, we're gonna get right in. So, the New York Forward program is a...essentially, it is a downtown revitalization program. And we have established a downtown boundary that is coterminous with the business improvement district here in the village. So, the boundaries of the bid, which is our business area, are the same boundaries for this district. So, all properties within the bid essentially would be eligible to apply. That includes public and private properties. Essentially, what has been awarded to us is there's not a...although there was a big paper check that was kind of delivered, right? And we had photos in front of it, there will not be a deposit of $4.5 million sitting in a bank account for the village at any point in time. What has happened is the state of New York has said, "We're gonna set aside $4.5 million towards revitalization projects." And they're reserved for the...within the village of Webster, right? So, some of those projects may be public-sector projects, like a park improvement project or street state improvements. Some of them may be private-sector projects, right? So, the goal of the next steps of the process is to identify exactly what those projects are. I can...the presentation itself goes over the goals of the New York Forward program. So, it's village revitalization. It's downtown investment. Improvements of the housing stock, improvements of the public spaces that we have come to enjoy, also improvement of the building stock. But not necessarily buildings that have been, for the lack of a better term, almost intentionally disinvested in. This is not an upkeep management program. This is not a, "I need a new roof," or, "You know, I'd really love to replace those windows that are broken." Those are investments that any property owner is expected to make, right? Into their property. So, these are for more holistic investments into the village center that will improve the vitality and function of our village center as a place for people to come, gather, and spend their time, shop, and then, of course, to congregate for events. And, of course, this could also help, you know, improve the tax base. So, we won $4.5 million. We won. So, what does that mean? Well, that means the first step in the process is we have to develop a final document. We submitted an application that had a host of our vision and our goals and some, you know, clear objectives of what we would accomplish with these funds, and then a host of example projects, right? Hopeful projects. That document is the starting point. That document will be refined, and the local planning committee is a group of citizens that will help refine that document. So, it is not a group of elected officials. There's a core group of elected officials that are part of like a backend organization or, I would say, just a committee, right? That will help keep the process flowing and make sure that all the logistics work. But the local project committee will be made up of local residents, in-business leaders, some property owners, but the goal is to have a broad diversity of participation on that committee. So, the mayor and myself have assembled a list of hopeful names to be invited. And that list actually had to get sent to the state for vetting and an okay. Once the state has given us the okay, then those individuals will actually be reached out to with a formal invitation to participate on the committee. None of those invitations have gone out, and none of those individuals know who they are, because we haven't told anybody yet, because we needed to make sure that there was a coherent agreement between the village and the state on what was basically the composition of that list, right? So, that committee will get formed, hopefully in April, and have its first meeting. And then, that committee will drive the planning process, and it will be guided by state-awarded consultants. So, separate money, not part of the $4.5 million. The state has hired consultants that's gonna assist the village in finalizing this process, this identification of the plan, and, of course, going through and identifying all the projects and, you know, the hopeful investments. Entire process will take six to seven months, starting in April, hopefully ending in October or November. And at that point, a list of projects will get sent to the state, and then the state will select the projects that it chooses to fund. I want to use the analogy of think of it like a wedding registry. Everything that we put on the list is something that we really want to see happen. But in the end, you don't have...the village will not have 100% control over which of the projects ultimately are selected by several state organizations, several state agencies, because the project will be run through multiple different agencies. The goal right now is to put together the best and most coherent list of projects and investments that we can, both on the public-sector side and on the private-sector side. That process will be led by the local planning committee. It'll be guided by the consultants, and it will take place over six months. In the next 30 to 45 days, a call for projects will go out. And that call for projects will be probably five, seven pages long. That is a proposal, you know, it's basically a request for proposals for folks. And then, from there, those proposals are understood, they're reviewed, they're scored, sort of ranked, and then, as we move to the next phase, right, the, I would say, the viability of the projects are determined, right? The cost analysis of the projects are determined, whether or not they actually can be funded, whether or not they're realistic proposals. And then, they'll just kind of be refined and refined until we get a core list of projects that we think we can work with. The village itself will also be submitting proposals for its public-sector projects. In the past, in other years, the municipality was given deference to basically not have to submit a proposal. This year, parity is what the state wants to at least see. So, everybody has to submit a proposal that vets out the projects, so that at least puts a little bit of onus on the municipality to ensure that it's doing its homework and putting forth a project that's been well thought out, right? And has broad support from the village board and, you know, from the public. So, that's really the next steps. The public involvement and public engagement process is gonna be multifaceted. We have that local planning committee. That's gonna be a committee of our peers and citizens within the community. They're gonna drive that process. There's gonna be multiple public workshops. We'll be one in the beginning of the process in April, probably, maybe May. Most likely, May. By the time...by the way, things are shaking out. Looking like that'll happen in May. That's gonna talk about that, a open call for projects. Describe it to the public. The next public workshop opportunity will be when that final list, or at least the semifinal list of projects, has been established to get concurrence from the public. In between, during the summertime, there will be lots of public engagement opportunities that will happen at specific events. Like, we're gonna, most likely, the consultant team will be having stakeholder meetings with either specific groups, such as, let's say, the business improvement district, or perhaps the Chamber of Commerce, or maybe the museum, or, you know, any other of these organizations. They'll have specific stakeholder meetings. But we'll also be holding events that are out in the public at other events. Maybe the jazz festival, maybe, you know, a Friday beer garden evening, something. We're going to where the people are and getting their feet. That is the broad summary. I think we did one question. Don actually brought up a good question regarding the matching funds required. So, each of these projects is gonna be scored essentially independently. I would say that the public-sector projects will have the least matching funds required, right? The state would most likely encourage some form of local investment, both to spread the money out as best as possible, to show that there's some commitment behind it, that there's some skin in the game, so to say. And for, like, let's say, in the village, at the village center, where we have the Veterans Park, you do have a parks trust fund that could potentially be tapped towards that. Or, we can start working together and figuring out, well, maybe the village does need the budget, setting aside some funds between now and, let's say, the next three, two to three budget cycles, so it can take on a project, a small component, maybe a 10% component of a project, right? The private sector will have more robust matching funds requirements. It will vary, anywhere from probably 30% to 50%. So...and I will say that none of these funds, on the private-sector side, are equity investments. None of them will be a check written up front. They will all be reimbursements. The village, because the funds will be run through one particular program, the village will be fortunate enough, they will get basically reimbursed during the life of the project, right? The project will happen, or a phase of that project will happen, invoices will come in, they'll get remitted, and then they'll get reimbursed. It would be very temporary forms of financing, just to actually construct the project, but the monies would come in, would come back within any days to the group, as long as we could process the invoices fast enough. On the private-sector side, those funds will all be expended upfront, and then, an accurate accounting and audit of the project will take place, and then, a reimbursement would be directed to the property owner, not through the village. It would be direct to the property owner. A lot of information. For me, it's been like drinking from a fire hose for like 20 days now. Any...any questions at this point? Anything that needs clarification? Don, did I answer any of your questions?
So, basically, what's next?
What's next? Finalization of the local planning committee. That committee will be formed, it will hold its first meeting, and hopefully by the end of April. And then, the very next thing, from the public side, would be a public information workshop that hopefully will take place here in the next, I would say, four to six weeks.
And is it you and the mayor that's deciding who's gonna be on the local planning committee?
The mayor and myself have assembled a list of names, and we have sent them to the state for approval.
Oh, so it's the state that approves?
The state has a...
Well, first you gotta get the people to say, "Yes, I wanna do it."
No.
No?
No.
This is silly.
It seems counterintuitive. I would agree. The state implored us to not reach out to people for fear that if a name was...that was brought up now and then the list changed because of the composition of the size, if we reached out to 20 people, but in the end, they only wanted 12 names, and we had to take some names off the list, that feelings would be hurt, and it would start everything on a sour note. That was the directive we were given. We're playing by the rules, considering that we've been blessed with an opportunity to spend $4.5 million. We're gonna play by the rule.
Although, the risk is you could have the opposite effect. They could say, "Sure, if these 12 are approved, you go to the 12, and you only get 10 of them that say yes, and I'm just too short." And then what happens?
I would say that they requested a list of eight names, and we provided 15.
So, you're hopeful that they'll get at least eight of them?
Yes, sir. Does that make sense? It's not how I would do it.
Appreciate your hard work on this project.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we appreciate everything.
Anything else?
Nice job, Matt.
Mr. Zalida? Nothing?
No.
There will be more questions.
Just curious if I'm one of the 15 names?
Me, too.
You don't need to answer that.
I will say that the 15 names that were submitted, none of them were elected officials, because we were asked that no elected official be on that list, because the elected officials will have a separate role.
I understand.
So, these are organizations and entities, institutions within the community that champion various efforts. You know, basically, it's broad and diverse a spectrum of the community that we could have, including some business owners and property owners, but also some nonprofits and some local organizations that we all know well. Hopefully, we can get a good diverse list of ideas and brains behind us. True community. Without any other questions, I leave you to your public hearing. Oh, I may add that these are village revitalization funds. Since this is not a blank check, this is for downtown revitalization. So, none of these funds could be funneled into a sewer department, for example. These are...that would not be ineligible. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
One item.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just wondering if we...if a project is selected, what would happen in the cost overruns?
So, if...the way it's gonna work is a project will be submitted for consideration by the state. It will have a very detailed budget assigned to it, and the sources and uses of those funds. So, we're gonna borrow X from a bank, we're gonna have X in equity cash of our own, and then we're gonna ask for Y from, you know, basically from the state, from the New York Forward program. In the end, the number that gets assigned to them from the New York Forward funds, that stays constant.
Okay.
Right? So, even if we're a public-sector project, so if the public sector, like, it's no different than any other grants, right? There's no changing the grant amount, you know, post-award. Those funds are assigned and they're encumbered down to the penny, then the project will get massaged and pushed and pulled, and so it comes in on budget. Or more cash from another source will come in. That's a good question.
Okay. At this time, we will now open the floor. This is for a public hearing, authorizing the improvements, certain improvements to the village wastewater treatment plant, where total cost, project cost, has risen from So, at this time, anybody who would like to address the board and do so, state your name and address, and we're going to be limited to three minutes' time. In three minutes, we will let you know, and time is up. Doors open.
Brian Donald, 623 Webster Road. So, price is increasing. How is that gonna affect per household, you know, amount a month, I mean, a year?
I believe right now it is projected at $69 increase, from 40, approximately 48.
So, I got some freedom of information from the village, and it says, like, today, it's like $225 per household average a year for 2024, right? And then, it's gonna go...it's gonna go up a little bit. This is at the $10 million or $12 million. Now, it's gonna be $16, right? So, it's the threshold from...the whole reason why you guys didn't want to join the town is because you say you can save your residents more money, right? But now that the price is going up, like, the town, when it finishes its project, per household, we're gonna be paying $301. You guys are gonna be maybe more than that now, because that...at the $12 million or $10 million it was in 2029, you were gonna be at $300, which is just $1 off of what we were. But that was at the lower price. Am I right? Am I saying that?
There were projections.
Right.
Correct. However, those projections were for the village. I have no idea if the town...
No, but I got the town freedom of information. I got the projections, and for the town, like, in 2026, it's gonna be $301. And if the...I got the information right here, but if the...and if the village's joined, it's also gonna be $301 for them. And if your projection's at the $12 million, in 2026, it's gonna be $300, that was at the lower price, your price has gotta be higher now. So, to me, it means like...
The mayor just told you, it's gonna go up $69 per EDU. The village is currently $225, plus $69 is $294, which is less than $301.
So, it's less than $301, but is that worth not combining with...can I give this information to the board right here?
Sure. And then, I did that in three minutes, so pardon my stuff. You look at that. This is what our neighborhood has been going for years. So, that's the town, right? And Paris, this is the village. So, this is my neighbor. This right here, this plant was in the village. This is the cultivation site. Your neighborhood, what about...
Sir, we need to stop, and we need to move on. We'll cash those out if you would wish.
Get your stuff back here.
Thank you.
I know. Thank you. Thank you. Was that three minutes?
Yes. That was three minutes.
You have the next person, Rob?
Thank you.
Can I say anything else?
No. Thank you.
My name is Mary Heather Smith. I live at 1233 Wall Road. Been there for 38 years. And I think one of the problems is that we have communication problems. And we've, as you guys know well, we've, you know, when this plant was placed where it is, it was placed in a town residential neighborhood. We...we don't hear...we don't hear what's going on. We hear that the village is gonna continue. Is it like that?
It should be.
Okay. We don't hear that what is going on with new buildings, improvements, et cetera. You guys, I think in the village, need to take a good, hard look at what you're paying for, and sort of last ditch, say, "Is this really the route we wanna go?" Even if the costs are close, you're gonna go down this road where we have a duplication of services, a state-of-the-art plant for 45,000 residents at the lake at Phillips Village, and an older plant, which, you know, I'm sure you guys are doing the best you can, but we still live with this in a fairly tight plot of land in a very residential neighborhood. Brian's on one side, I'm on another, and, you know, we would really like for you to explore this further. It seems ridiculous to continue this duplication of services when things could be better for all of them. Thank you.
Jim Adams, 1222 Imperial Drive, Webster. I don't fully understand as to why you guys are not deciding to build the plant and utilize the town's facilities. Free Life, the big project that's going on out towards Ontario and the Webster area, is building a very large water treatment plant as well. It's my understanding that the town has an agreement to be able to deliver product to there, so that they can use their treatment plant as well. So, now, we're gonna have three...
No.
Three facilities in Webster. It sounds a bit ridiculous. I really think that you guys should think about it, considering utilizing the town's And I do think that that facility there, and your guys' facility there, does have spillover that goes into the Bell Creek. I back up to that. You say not. You guys don't capture water the way you should. The plant's very old. You don't have a...there's no trench around your entire facility capturing your own water and spill out. High amount of rain, the creek backs up, contamination occurs, it does happen. So...
Elizabeth, 1075 Railway Crossing. I know a few years ago, the town and the village had detailed conversations about a joint sewer plant for the town and the village. Those discussions took maybe a year, year and a half, and I think the village made the right choice in forming, continuing to have their own sewer plant. I'll never give you the reasons why here. When I left office in 2019, the sewer rate was, put the town Webster outside the village, $189 and some change. And I had done Phase 1 of the addition to the sewer plant at about $16 million, and it was bonding. Since that time, town of Webster has appropriated 81... Since that time, town of Webster's taken out, has appropriated 81.8 million, 81.5 million to do upgrades. It has recently took another $7 million.5, that adds to $88 million. Of the 81 million, only $35 million so far has been bonded, the rest of it is on anticipation notes. But this year, my sewer rate was $296 and some change. So if the gentleman thinks that in 2026, he's going to be at $301, I got a bridge on something, because that's not going to happen. Supervisor right now does not have any, not one, agreement with Fairlife for anything in the way of paybacks or anything. They have bonded $88 million without one agreement with Fairlife Coke to get one dime back from them at this point in time. And I am very concerned that they're going to take out a 30-year bond, and then maybe Mr. Coke will pay for 10 years, and we, the taxpayers, are going to get stuck for the interest for the other 20 years. So I'm just here to tell you that you made the right decision, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Reynolds, 138 Judson Street, on the village. I'm representing Webster City Sunday Action League tonight, I'm the chair. I just want to read a little something here. Some village residents received an anonymous flyer this past weekend illegally placed in their mailboxes, giving scare tactics. The people most likely involved knowingly purchased property in the vicinity of the sewer treatment plant, the village sewer treatment plant, and are now exaggerating the cost for the village residents for upgrades, so much that they feel that the town and the village sewer treatments should be combined. This is a very bad idea. In three years, the town rebuilding its own old treatment plant has gone from $60 million to $120 million. Why should village taxpayers pay for millions in debt for broken-down town sewer pump stations that village residents will never use? Village residents will pay less. Upgrading the village treatment plant upgrades will make it state-of-the-art, environmentally friendly, and cost-effective. The village wastewater treatment plant is not a redundant service, since they don't serve the same people. Having our own treatment plant is the most cost-effective way to bring local wastewater treatment to the village. Thank you.